We're going to reconvene to our Board of Trustees meeting, the regular Board of Trustees for Wednesday, December 18th. I'd like to welcome everybody. I have nothing to report out from closed session. I do want to thank you all for coming out on this dark and stormy night and spending your time with us. We have a lovely agenda this evening. I'm very much looking forward to it. I would like to start by asking if there's any adjustments to the agenda.
Yeah, we are going to move item 14 to follow the Hef, Hatta, and Student Trustee report, which would be after 13E.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. And I will note that trustee, our student trustee Alex is not here this evening. Have mercy on him. Teacher is listening in for his finals tomorrow, and he's under the weather as well, so thoughts go out to him. We will go ahead and, if you join me, please for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. This is a reminder, we are videotaped, so if you address the board, please speak into the microphone, we'd appreciate that. I also want to remind folks that in the back, there are some cards that if you'd like to speak on either a non-agenda item or an agenda item, that you need to fill those out, please. We will welcome your comments. All right, so we have some business of the board this evening. We have our item eight, the annual organization of the Board of Trustees. Our first item is to elect our Board President.
So by bylaw, we rotate the officers of the board, and Donna Del Rey, trustee Del Rey, would be up for the presidency, so we'd be looking for a motion and then a vote.
I would like to approve that motion to elect trustee Del Rey as president. Is there any further discussion? Any concern? Do we just vote by just yea or nay? Or is it a roll call vote?
All those in favor.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Yes, yes.
And we will note that Donna has to leave at 7:00. She has a flight to catch, so she was elected and she's walking out shortly. And trustee Kiff will continue to facilitate this month's meeting.
All right, when do I swear you in? When do I swear at you?
Yeah, right now.
You oath me now.
I, Donna Del Rey, declare my oath. I, Donna Del Rey, solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge, discharge the duties upon which I am about to stand.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to stand.
All right, proceeding, we will now elect the Board Vice President/ Clerk as per Board bylaws.
Yeah, so trustee Romo Flores would be the next in line to be Vice President.
I move to elect Aracely Romo Flores as the Vice President for the next term. Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Quick, quick, real quick.
I literally was like...
All in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have the, and that passes, obviously unanimously welcome, Vice President.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. All right, and then we need to elect the Secretary to the Board.
Yeah, by bylaw, the Superintendent is the Secretary of the Board, so you would be nominating me. Yeah, you have to vote me.
Okay, all right.
I move we elect Chris Vandenhoofel as the Secretary of the Board.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes. All right, congratulations, everyone. We're going to do item D, set the time and place for regular meetings.
So our meetings, you have in your backup the Board meeting dates, and then we would be doing them typically, this is the third Wednesday at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. There are a few dates, and those dates that are not the third Wednesday because of vacations or budget dates, things like that, I believe. It's just March and December, that would be the difference. Yeah, so. Any discussion around dates?
No.
Nobody has any anniversaries or anything? No?
Any children going to college?
Yeah, exactly.
Lights to San Diego.
Yeah.
All right, do we need to vote on that?
We do need to vote on that, yeah.
I'd like to motion that we accept the regular Board meeting dates.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and please note that they are at City Hall unless otherwise specified. All right, item E, elect representative and alternate to the Sonoma County Committee on School District Organizations.
So this is a prestigious appointment on a committee that never meets. So in the case that there was going to be district reorganization in the county, this would be the committee that would handle that. And so we haven't had any in a long time, although there is some discussion about it, possibly in the future. And so we would need to elect a representative and then a potential alternate should this committee ever meet.
And is it traditionally the President and Vice President?
Traditionally, it's been the President and Vice President.
I move that we nominate the President and Vice President to serve on the Sonoma County Committee on School District.
Committee on School District.
Oh, yeah, Committee on School District Organization. I better make this bigger.
SCCSDO.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then the appointment to serve as Board Liaison to the following committees. So you guys have before you the different committees. The Hef, the Heelsburg Education Foundation, will be...
Is typically the President, yeah, so...
President and Vice President.
The Vice President would be the alternate.
I'm very agreeable to that.
We don't need to, we vote on the whole slate.
Okay, okay, so is that okay with you ladies?
Totally.
All right. The next group would be the Superintendent Policy Review Committee. This is just a time for anybody, you can just volunteer yourself. So if these are committees that you'd like to serve on, please just speak up.
I'll volunteer.
And I'd like to do that again.
Okay, so Mike and Judy, please. All right, the next committee is the D-LAC, the District English Learners Advisory Committee. Any discussion who'd like to serve?
As much as I really enjoy being on that committee, I would be very comfortable stepping away from that for a year, taking on that President role. I might still pop in.
I'll step up to that if somebody would be an alternate if I'm not able to make it, but...
Okay.
And I understand there's English translations.
Yeah, we will translate for you. You've got to remind me, though, I'm terrible at translating back to English.
That's all right.
And yeah, Aracely, would you like to remain on that committee? Or would... Okay.
So we have two, we're good.
So Aracely and Mike will serve on the D-LAC Committee.
And I can be a third alternative if someone can.
Okay, and then we have the Heelsburg Chamber of Commerce.
So the Chamber meets the first Thursday, I believe, first or second Thursday of the month in the morning at around 8:00 o'clock at the Chamber of Commerce, it's the second Thursday. I typically, I have gone, there's been years where I've gone to every meeting, I'm at three or four meetings a year pace now, but the trustee, typically a city council member goes three or four times a year and/or a city, people like the city manager, assistant city manager. Time to report on the goings-on in the school district and to hear some of the business community concerns, not necessarily about schools, but just about the city in general. It's interesting, it's a great group, and it's kind of a low commitment level. If you went three or four times a year, we'd be good, so.
You said the meetings are on Thursdays at 8:00?
Thursdays at 8:00, so if you are at work during that time, you would not be able to serve, yeah.
How long do they last?
You can go literally for the first 10 minutes and just sit through our report and the city report if you want, or you're welcome to join them for the entire meeting, so. And their meetings are typically about an hour, yeah.
Generally wrap up before people go to work.
It's that I have to be in a fifth grade class at 8:30 on Thursdays.
Yeah, they don't look twice if you walk out after the school city part of it, so it's okay.
Okay, well, I would do that.
And I could, I could go too, as long as I don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
I can't stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so how about, sorry, not that we don't want to, but so let's go ahead, Judy and I will serve on that committee.
Great.
And then the Superintendent Budget Resource Committee.
So we haven't called this committee, it's a committee that is permissible in Board policy, it's not a must, we haven't done it in years, but in the event that we did, we would want, it'd probably be good to have two folks to serve on it to discuss budget resource, budget development, so.
Well, that's another one, I'll do that one, too. You want to do that one?
Yes, we have to do everything together, Judy.
I know.
So we'll do it together. Judy and I will serve together on the Budget Resource Committee. And then the Curriculum Council.
Erin, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we generally meet at least twice a year, sometimes three, depending on how much curriculum we're adopting. I do anticipate an important, at least one meeting coming in the spring, because we do have some significant adoptions coming down, so we'll have at least one probably in the, you know, mid-spring, and then depending on the outcome of that, we may need to meet one more time.
I would like to remain on that committee, if that's okay.
We've had one, correct, on that committee?
Yeah, generally, there's been one, and if you can't make it, we... Oh, Judy, yeah, you've served.
You do have two right now.
Yes, yes.
Well, I can be a back, if you put Jamie first, I'll be the backup.
Okay, I'll be A, Judy will be B. And then the last one is the Sonoma County Committee on School District Organization.
We already did that.
We did that.
Hi, I'm so sorry. My apologies.
No problem.
All right.
I like the meeting.
Any, so the updated Board of Trustees priority list, have there been changes to that?
There have not, no.
Okay.
I only deleted a couple items that no longer take place in the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, is there any question or discussion on that?
Again, that's just kind of the reminders of the events that we try to all make it to, or the ones that are recommended, et cetera, so.
Okay.
So I've already forgotten when the Chamber of Commerce meets.
We'll get it, we'll get you a calendar.
You'll send it where I'm supposed to be. Okay, thank you.
And while we're still on this topic, is there, is time set aside?
Um, wait, can we vote?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do we need to vote on that?
Okay, okay. Looking for a motion, please, to approve the appointments as for the Board Liaisons for the coming year?
So moved?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then I will move to approve the updated Board Trustees priority list, a second, please. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Well, that's it, that's our board business. Thank you for...
Hanging in there.
Sticking with us. Now we have some very special guests that I am thrilled to have before us this evening. We're going to be celebrating our success, this is item nine on our agenda. The Heelsburg High School FFA and Agriculture Department, I left my, I'm your biggest fan banner at home, but please come forward and present to us, we're looking forward to this. All right. Good evening.
Good evening, we're Heelsburg FFA, I'm Amy, Bones, Fiona, Vivvy, Claire, and Maggie. We'll give you guys a little highlight of what we've done this last season.
Well, welcome, glad to have you.
Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve. The FFA Creed by Ian Tiffany. I believe in the future of agriculture with a faith born not of words but of deeds, achievements won by the present and past generations of agriculturists, in the promise of better days through better ways, even as the better things we now enjoy have come to us from the struggles of former years.
Think of your local fair, communities coming together for food, fun, and to support youth involved in agriculture through either 4H or FFA as they show their animals. Walking through the pens, you see steer, pigs, goats, lambs, rabbits, and my personal favorite, chickens. But at our last fair, there were only rows of empty cages and a sign trying to explain why there were no chickens being shown. California is being affected by a highly contagious poultry disease called viralit Newcastle disease, also known as VND.
Stationed by the ear of corn, I keep an accurate record of all meetings and correspond with other secretaries wherever corn is grown and FFA members meet.
So now we'll go into, tell you guys what you guys allowed us to do this semester and all the trips that we were able to go on over the summer and during the school year.
So this past summer, Ian, Claire, and myself were lucky enough to attend the Washington Leadership Conference in Washington, DC. The focus of this conference is to learn your strengths and weaknesses and combine them with your passions and problems that need to be solved in your community to be, so that you are living to serve and bettering your community. We started this in Washington, DC by packaging over 1,000 meals for the homeless in just under an hour, and that's going to be very beneficial because, as we learned, Washington, DC has a large homeless population. So now Ian, Claire, and myself will be trying our best to use our strengths and our interests to help our community.
At the very beginning of the year, we, me and many of my friends, all first-year Ag students, had the opportunity to attend Greenhand Leadership Conference. I don't come from an Ag background, so I didn't know very much about FFA at the beginning of the year. However, all of us came home much more educated than when we left. First and foremost, we met all the other Greenhands from other schools in our section. Together, we did team-building activities, developed our leadership skills, and learned about opportunities in the FFA.
Exactly one week ago, we attended our Sonoma Section Speaking Competition. We brought 12 members from our chapter and had the ability to compete in various competitions to make our better public speakers. We bought, we brought three freshmen with Jackson and Maggie getting first and second place, three sophomores with Annie getting second place, three people competing in job interview with Sam getting fifth and Ian getting third. Alex Domingos won the extemporaneous competition, and myself and Mason competed and prepared. You heard the first paragraph of my speech just now, and we won first and second place. This means we now have seven people moving on to the regional competition, and we're so excited to continue to see our chapter members grow as public speakers.
On November 20th, 31 members of FFA traveled to the Sonoma County Fairgrounds to compete at the Sonoma Section Opening and Closing Competition. We had five teams compete and two high individuals for their position. On December 5th, 12 students from our chapter spent their time packaging meals and oranges for families at the Redwood Empire Food Bank. So then, at the, we actually packaged 25,000 pounds of oranges, and successfully, we did 65, yesterday we, yeah, 65 Secret Santa gifts at the, for the, for the Sonoma County Secret Santa program.
In October, while school was on session for the fires, a few members from our chapter traveled over to Indianapolis for a national convention, where they were able to attend sessions, go on industry tours, and so much more while we were there. I was there, I was selected as one of California's 42, around that, as a delegate, where I met in committees with other FFA members from across the country, and we worked in committees to help better the future of FFA. Along with that, we had Emerson Click, who is one of our members, who placed sixth in the National Agri-science Competition, and we also had two Hildreth FFA alumni members come and receive their American Farmers Degree, which I believe is only 1% of FFAers ever get their degree. It was very fortunate.
This is just a little bit of what we've been able to accomplish this year and the opportunities that we've given our members. So thank you for giving us some of your time to explain that to you, and I hope you guys have a better understanding of what our program is and what we work to do each year. Thank you.
You need to stay here so I can take your picture. Right, Ms. Hunt? Ms. Nielsen, don't you want a picture of them? Don't you want me to take a picture of them? Okay, all right, look here, ladies and gentlemen. All right, on three, one, two, three. All right, perfect, thank you.
And I'm really sorry you had to wash the chickens yesterday. I didn't know you washed chickens, but yeah.
I would like to take just a moment to recognize our two Ag teacher, Ag teachers, Ms. Nielsen and Ms. Hunt. If you would just stand for a moment, please. Stand to be recognized. They're the motivation behind these outstanding students, so we, I just want to personally thank you for the opportunities that you give them. My family has benefited, for sure, but I just thank you very much. And on behalf of the Board, we want to thank you for the program that you offer so many students, hundreds of students. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have, oh, hmm, okay. Mr. Vandenhoofel?
So it is my pleasure to recognize President Kiff, who is the outgoing President, though she's going to continue to run the meeting tonight, and thank her for her outstanding leadership throughout the last year. We have had an interesting year in the Board, during Board meetings and discussions, and I think I speak on behalf of all of us, Jamie, when I say that you have been a model of civility and grace as the President. So I want to thank you for your leadership, and we have a small gift for you of appreciation.
Well, thank you. Can I break it in? That's adorable. Would you like to see it?
You can, at home.
It's my very own.
Do you want to read the engraving on the gavel?
Do I want to read that?
Filter maybe, no, I'm kidding.
Did you write it large enough that I'm going to be able to read it?
Yeah, I don't...
It says, "Your three minutes are up."
Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent Vandenhoofel, that's delightful.
Appreciate all you've done, and it's been a pleasure to work with you as President.
It's been an honor to serve, thank you.
I want to just add to that, that it's been a pleasure being your Vice President, and we've spent a lot of time together this last year.
We have, it's been very special.
But, and I think Chris's phrase is correct of grace and civility, and I can tell the public watching that this is who you are. What you do and how you act up here is exactly the model of grace and civility that you are also in behind closed doors and one-on-one, so it has been a pleasure serving.
Thank you, it's been an honor to represent you all and the district, truly, truly, thank you very much.
May I add to that as the freshman trustee? I am impressed, was impressed, and will continue to be, I'm sure, with how you handle things such a professional, and again, with grace and civility. You're a model of the President. Not to say anything, Donna, but you have a little to live up to, but I do appreciate your leadership for the new guy.
Thank you, it's very kind of you to say, thank you very much. All right, so we have some other recognitions, much more worthy, so our Transportation Department.
Yes, we do, so we, when the fires hit two months ago, I got a phone call from Dr. Harrington, the Sonoma County Superintendent, early Saturday morning before they had announced that there was going to be an evacuation. And, and he told me, we're going to evacuate basically half the county, and they've asked that schools rally to get drivers to be able to help the elderly and folks who are disabled to be able to be evacuated quickly into safety. And I want to recognize our Transportation Department, Tim Forsich, our Director of Transportation's here, Tim, you want to come up?
Yay!
So we rallied, Tim, how many drivers did we have in the effort?
I think we ended up with seven total.
So we had seven total drivers, they used our fleet primarily in northern Sonoma County, there were some drivers from other districts that came to drive our buses, and Tim coordinated through the emergency services at the county. And so just last week, the Sonoma County Office of Education Board presented us a plaque that says, this is presented to the bus drivers at Heelsburg Unified School District in recognition of your dedication and commitment to safely evacuate residents during the Kincaid Fire October of 2019, and they passed a resolution and recognition, so I'm going to give this to Tim to pass on to the bus drivers. Thank you very much for all you did and for rallying the troops and for their willingness. It says a lot about the culture you've created there at Transportation, so appreciate it.
Absolutely, hear, hear.
When I, when I took this job, one of the things I recall having asked my potential employers was to support me as I moved on and learned the position, and I've had the opportunity to have Steve Barakman as my boss for the last about eight years now, and I want to say that he's done exactly that, supported me, and, you know, Chris has as well, it's just been, it's been a lot of fun, so.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
All right, talking again about the fires, we had somebody that didn't evacuate and stayed to make sure our campuses were secure and was monitoring the fire and actually lending a hand to law enforcement as they were monitoring things in the town, and I don't know that he actually slept the entire week that we were out of school. And then once the cleanup effort started going, he was coordinating that with Resig and with the vendor, and did an amazing job, and I think he did take like a half day off and went out to dinner following, finally. I'm sorry, Noreen, that it's been such a stressful time. So Rob Smith just really was dedicated and was really my eyes and ears on the ground about what was going on, so a lot of the information I was feeding to you came from him, and he went clearly above and beyond, and we are forever grateful for his efforts during that. So we've made our own plaque for Rob, just to say thank you and to recognize him, so Rob, if you can come up.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anything you want to say, or?
Well, I'm like Tim, been, been an easy job because of the people have supporting me. My boss here, at least for the last few weeks, anyway. And, and Chris, who's always been there, and you have too, I've worked with most of you on a time-to-time basis, and I'm really proud of the district, and I'm really proud of Heelsburg, and, you know, I did what I needed to do to support the community, and I was happy to do it.
We appreciate that, thank you so much.
Yeah, and Rob, you know, we loved Glenn, Glenn did a great job, but it's been a real pleasure to have Rob, he's a little friendlier face with most of the staff, so, thanks, Rob. Can you pass that to Jamie? So I have a public comment, I don't know if there's any other public comments on non-agenda items.
I do not believe so, you may continue.
Okay. So first, actually, I have two public comments. The first one I want to say is that yesterday, we had our high school and junior high band concert, and all of you may not have seen it yet, but we all received an email from the President of the Board from Windsor Unified thanking us because Windsor had an issue with their band teacher who is apparently no longer teaching there, and their band wasn't able to have a holiday concert. And so John Natelli, our band instructor, reached out to the high school in Windsor and said, "Bring your kids to us, we're going to give a concert, and we'd love to have them." And so their drum line came and performed during our winter concert yesterday at The Raven, and it was a rousing performance, and then they stayed and supported our kids, and President Eric Heitz sent an email just saying thank you, and maybe we can do more joint music ventures together, so. So that's, kudos to John Natelli and Bill and everybody who made that possible, so thank you.
Yes.
And, and then I am here to recognize Steve Barakman, this is his last Board meeting, so Steve is, as you all know, going to be the Chief Business Officer at the UKI Unified School District where he lives. He is no longer commuting two hours a day back and forth and spend more time with his daughter, it's a good move for him, both professionally and personally, and I'm really happy for him and supported him throughout the process. And Steve has been here 13 years, I think, as our Director of Business and Maintenance Operations. He, he has seen a lot here in Heelsburg, right? He took us through the dark times when the budget was not lining up, and we had the state minder in here and got us to a place of fiscal health, and has provided great leadership. I've really appreciated his creativity and his number sense, he always has great ideas when it comes to negotiations, and how can we get more money in the hands of our employees and make the budget still work. And so he's been a great confidant, he's been an amazing business officer, and we're going to miss him. And on behalf of the district, Steve, we have a little parting gift for you. You've been a supporter of all our programs, but a lot around CTE, and you really made CASA work, because that was creative budgetarily in the, in the beginning years, right? And so Terry and others helped us be able to get you a cooler that you can fill with your favorite beverage. that you can fill with your favorite beverage on behalf of the district.
I want to say quickly, thank you too, and that from my position as the Director of CNI, that Steve always makes decisions and helps us think through what's best for kids. And it's not often that somebody who's in the budget seat puts kids first. And I just appreciate that so much, and that you think about what kids need first. Thank you.
So I don't even know if you have a patio, but if you do, you have a cooler for it. I have one of these at home that my son built when he was in CASA a few years ago. It's great, and, you know, it's just a small token of our appreciation. So thank you very much, and if you need help getting it home, we can figure that out too, so. But Steve, we are really grateful for all you've done. And I want to echo what Erin said, you have always been student-centered, and that's not always the case from the business office. And so that's much appreciated, so thank you for your leadership.
I would like to add too, from someone that is not really a numbers gal, I appreciate the way that you were able to make things very clear for someone who cannot really see through the mud. So thank you very much for making it always very presentable and very real for me in particular, and I think for the board as well, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I would add to that, I remember my first six months or so on the board, I think I met with you before every board meeting, like, what is this? Because it's, I don't know if you guys have seen our interim budget? Yeah, it's a lot, and really, really, really helped me understand and, you know, just get a handle on it. I also want to say that it is so important to have someone in your role that we trust, that we can totally listen to and count on and give us the conservative, and then a little more hmm, maybe, you know? And because we are the fiscal, we are responsible for the fiscal health of this district. And it has been a pleasure, you know, just knowing that you've got us well taken care of. So thank you, and UKIA is lucky to have you.
Absolutely, for sure, we'll miss you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve. It's been a, it's been a pleasure, 13 years.
All right, all right, excellent. Seeing that there are no additional public comments on non-agenda items, I will request an approval to approve the consent agenda, please. A motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda? I would just like to comment, there are some lovely scholarship contributions, so I appreciate that. If anyone's looking for some more information about some of our new course proposals, that is in the consent agenda as well, so please take an opportunity to look through that. If there's no further discussion, yes? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so this is for the school counselor, the secondary school counselor?
Yeah, it's just adding the word preferred at the bottom, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So I'll just, yeah, it's three years' experience in secondary counseling or related field preferred. So that's the correction or the addition. All right, seeing that there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, so the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on, we, I want to remind you again, if you have a comment that you'd like to make on an agenda item, please feel free to fill out a card and bring it on forward. So moving on to item 31, again, I told you, it was an awesome night. We have the opportunity to hear from our Athletics Department. And, yeah, so thank you very much for coming this evening, our Athletic Department. Mr. Halliday, Principal Halliday will introduce our speakers, and we're excited to hear from you as well. Speaker? Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
This is my third time doing this job. It will not be your fourth time.
You're never leaving, is that what you're saying?
I would like to start with, and we talked about this the other day, at Hillsburg High School now, 2019, we are not celebrating our success solely on the team. Really important, we really get to know that. And everyone here gets to know that, that we have, you know, our football team was 0-10, and we felt like this season was sort of a victory, and I'll talk about that in a minute, so. And that there are other sports besides football in Hillsburg that we wanted to maybe touch on as well. So I only focused on the fall because I've just taken over in the fall, so this is not a whole year. Happy to come back and do the same thing, obviously shorter, but in the spring and winter, to talk about basketball, baseball, all those other sports to go through. So we'll just roll through with this thing.
There we go.
So we are now a school of about 550 students. I totaled up some numbers from last year with this fall, and that'd be about 250, 300 students are playing sport. So that's obviously more than half of our whole population of the school. So they're involved, you can look up here in our numbers just in the fall. The reports you guys have gotten in the past give you all kinds of numbers, just bar graphs and graphs and other kind of graphs, and this is really simple. Here's our number of athletes, we have 130, we have 45 of which are scholar athletes, which for me as a teacher is really important. To be a scholar athlete, you have to have a 3.5 GPA that's non-weighted, so your AP classes, honors, none of that counts. So we have 35, 5% of all athletes are scholar athletes, as NCS and CI recognize themselves. You can see the teams, obviously cross-country and tennis dominate, they usually do, but those athletes tend to be more scholar athletes. Hey, golf had 2 out of 5, that's not bad. So anyhow, what I decided to do here was just roll through the sports. Here's why this is important. I don't coach any kids right now, so I'm just here talking for what these people do. And so I put their names up here, their faces up here, the teams up here. These are, this is what's important, bar graphs and line graphs will do much for me, so. I'm just going to talk about each team real quick and blast through and get done. So Val Cronin and Scott Johnson, her assistant, did tennis this year. If you saw side-by-side of last year, this year, last year they had 11. That's 32, actually 31 pictured. Biggest team ever in recent Hillsburg High School history. I didn't go back and look at it in the yearbook, but I imagine 32 is the biggest girls tennis team that's probably ever been. So I don't know what happened, she didn't know what happened. She was expecting 11, had to order a whole bunch more uniforms and get shorts. And Val did all the smiles, super happy, and they finished third in the league, and that's really, really good for Hillsburg High School in the league that we're in. And so I wanted to thank them and throw their picture up there so that everybody can see that. Moving on, this is our smallest team, this is girls golf. And girls golf was not going to happen this year. So Hannah May Cronin, who's in the center, the left of the girl on the crutches, who looks like a student. She's only a couple years out of the high school, and she said she would do it after I called her about 10 times, and then realized that she was not old enough to be the varsity coach. So Carla Forkini, who is a new teacher at the school, I think, completed with the staff a couple times, and she stepped up to make this happen, so they were able to make it through the season. Mila in there, the girl on the crutches, would have went on to NCS, but she got hit by a car. So that didn't happen. But there are some young girls on that team, hopefully get them coming out next year. Hannah May is going to do a little bit of scouting, get the numbers a little bit bigger. But we're really happy to have a girls golf team this young. At a small school, it's probably one of the hardest areas to handle. So we're going to be working on that, but that's girls golf. This is cross-country. And Kate Stephanie and Mike Eber, are the coaches of cross-country. So I talked to Mike today and just said, "Give me something," because cross-country, you can't watch it. They just run by my room, you know, they just fly by, they're talking, running. So I didn't know it. So I went to Mike, and Mike is happy to tell me that they have five freshman boys. I guess they call them the Fitch Mountain Five Freshmen. They're up there, you can kind of tell. Stephanie Henley is one female there that is kind of this young group that's coming up. Jack Van Den Hoofel is sort of center-left, is sort of leader of this team as far as talent-wise and age-wise, and he had accolades as well, which I'll talk about in a second. So they have a real promising future. The junior highs started, their program is building with some new coaches, I'll talk about them in a second. So this team should be getting bigger and better, and they all seem to be having fun, just running.
That is shocking. But yeah.
So there's all the football coaches, I'm not going to read all their names. Tom took over as their head coach this year, really young head coach, he was all rare to go. And, you know, last year we didn't even have varsity. So like I said, they were 0-10, and our success was that they had 52 players. They only lost one student to grades. Not one player quit the team this year, which was the problem, obviously, last year. So the success is that they finished two teams whole season. And now he has a schedule that's a little bit softer next year, and should help us get some wins and kind of get back in the win column, have some fun. But to make it through a whole season when you're 0-10, you guys saw some of the scores. To not have kids to say, "Forget this, I'd rather be at home on Friday night," whatever. It speaks a lot to the staff that he put together, and there are some young guys and then that, you know, maybe that helped the whole thing, and a couple old guys that hold down the fort. So it went really well, as good as an 0-10 season. Okay, here's volleyball. Tim Collins, Amanda Curly, Amanda Fielder is not pictured there, and a couple other graduates who did all of their paperwork to help coach. They show up and they're, they're the team that's watched more than probably any other fall team. I bet there's more people that vibrate than you football games. It's inside, which means it's actually very informative. But they were good, they were competitive, they went to the NCF playoffs, and a very successful program. She's our junior, they're both our junior high coaches, and so they are building programs from the bottom up, doing a great job. Okay, so I didn't know when I ever get to talk about the junior high, I just said to talk about the high school, but I threw this in there anyways. So I want to recognize our junior high coaches. Marcel Peggy and Amy Anderson, who is a new cross-country person. They're also going to do track, and they're going to flip-flop positions where Amy will be the head coach and Marcel will be the assistant. Jim Lago, who's coached every basketball in this town for 30 years, does seventh grade girls. And Marta Mota, who worked at the high school last year, took over the co-ed soccer team when I couldn't find a coach and we were up against it. It's great, she also runs the competitive club here in town, so she was able to grab a lot of players. If you look over on the right, we have the league champs, seventh grade girls basketball is 9-0, and the soccer team is 11-1. And so they both will get pennants hanging up in the refurbished gym soon. And so that's my Hillsburg Junior High School, and we have boys basketball and volleyball going right now. I didn't want to have more pictures. Okay, and then I meet with Bill, and we talk about athletes of these seasons of sports. So this is fall. So we pick a male and female athlete, he goes up in the trophy case at school. So we have Sophia Pickering on the left, she was second in the league, she's a first-team all-league selection. She went to NCS for tennis, and a great kid, you know, always smiling, goofy. But she's great, and so she's our female athlete. And Jack, who like when I talked to Mike, said that he would have went on to NCS and had a longer season, but he got sick, pneumonia, I believe, he had. And so that's sort of ended his season, but he set the fastest Hillsburg High School time at Spring Lake ever. He's a Hillsburg High School student, so I thought that was really cool. And he'll be back next year, he's going to do it all again. So that's our fall athletes. And then here's what Bill and I are working on. And I don't even know if this is worded correctly, but I'm just going to read it. "We submitted proposals to negotiate for more equitable reconfigured pay scale." I put a comment there, but this was obviously downloaded before I put my comment in. So I tried to get more coaches paid, this is the second one. We're trying to get some assistant coaches paid, it's really hard to get coaches. They're what make this whole thing happen. If they're not there, the sports just go away. I'm not going to go out and coach them. And we beat everyone up in town that has any skills to coach. And we're good, it's just it's too hard, too time consuming, doesn't pay anything. We're trying to get some paid assistants to grab some younger people, get them out there, get them to help out, and we're working on that. We're working on some Title IX stuff, which has to do with equity and make it sort of a, it's a level playing field, literally, for boys and girls in softball sports. That's sort of what I'm working on, and I know that was probably longer than I wanted to talk about. That's all, thanks.
That was excellent.
Brian, I just wanted to say thank you, it's great to have you back in the position, and I really appreciate your eye for equity between baseball and softball and your leadership there, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne, we look forward to having you back. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, item 131B, English Language Proficiency Assessment for California. Ms. Erin Ryan. Good evening.
Okay, so I've been looking at this data for a while, but it just got released from embargo. I mean, something's just caught up the front. I'm going to be sharing the results from the submitted LPAC test that was given last year, 29th year. This is the second year that LPAC has been administered or placed.
Is the light on?
Hello?
There you go.
I was like, I'm usually much louder than that, okay. All right, there we go. All right, so the LPAC is the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, and it's a standardized test given to all English language learners that provides information about their annual progress towards English language proficiency. So we look at the overall scores, and we use it as part of our reclassification process. So the overall score is comprised of then an oral language and a written language score. And then the oral language has a listening and a speaking score, sub-score, and the written has the reading and the writing sub-score. The, if you look to the right, this is a sample score report that a family would get. You'll see the overall score on that little dial-type thing that shows their progress towards proficiency. We are looking for students in the district to be scoring a Level 4. That means that their English skills are well-developed. The oral language and written language scores are listed below, and those are also on a 1 through 4 scale. And then just to like confuse everyone a little bit, the listening and speaking and reading and writing subdomains are leveled by 3 instead of 4. So it's beginning somewhat slash moderately and then well-developed.
So Erin, just to be clear, these are really, this test is really a snapshot of our entire native Spanish-speaking population and where they are on the road to bilingual, like.
The English proficiency, yeah.
Yes, the proficiency.
Yes.
So it's not, it doesn't really show their progress per se, like from last year to this year. It's really a snapshot right now of where each of them is and then aggregated, correct?
Correct. There is a little bit of progress monitoring that can happen there, just based on, you know, looking at the scores from year over year. And I'll talk a little bit about that later, but yes, it is a snapshot for where they are in this period of time.
And only students who are currently designated EL take it. So our students who are reclassified no longer take it, yeah.
You are welcome. And parts of this are bilingual, because I'm going to be using this at ELAC meetings, but I'll go with English for right now. So this shows the typical LPAC levels. So you can see well-developed, these are students who would maybe only occasionally need help using English. They're going to be performing on par with their peers that are native English speakers. And then going down from there, you can see the different categories. And on the bottom, it shows how that, how the LPAC levels relate to the ELD standards proficiency levels. And so our ELD teachers can use this data to inform their instruction, to see what types of, you know, what would the appropriate assignments and lessons be for each student based on their level. I feel like I might be missing a few pages, but, okay. So this is how we performed overall as a district. This is, so this is pre-K through 12, and, oh, let me go where I am. So 276 students were tested. We had 41 students score that Level 4, 127 score at Level 3. So that's 61 of our, 61% of our students scoring at either Level 3 or 4 in the district. You're not going to see a whole lot of comparative data, even though this is our second year in LPAC, because in the past year, calendar year, there have been some changes to the score thresholds. So if you look up here, this is just an example, this doesn't include every grade, but there's minimum thresholds that you have to meet in order to be, you know, considered at Level 2 or Level 3 or Level 4. And after the first year at the CDE's request, ETS and WestEd, a few organizations, did a threshold score review study to just provide additional validity to show that, you know, the LPAC is, you know, doing what it's supposed to do. It's giving us an accurate representation of students proficiency. And in general, the studies showed that, you know, we were really close, or they were very close with the scoring, but they wanted to. uh, they were very close with the scoring, but they wanted to, um, they, they changed the threshold slightly and they made it a little bit more challenging in order to get to that Level 4, that well-developed. And so it's not entirely apples to apples if you're looking at, um, 17, 18 versus 18, 19. However, I'll show you one comparative slide. Um, this is our, uh, 2018 data. So that was the test on the left that was taken in the spring of 2018 versus 2019. And these, again, we've only had LPAC going for two years, so this is the amount of data we have. But if you look, um, they are, it, we didn't have quite as many students scoring in 4, which, you know, makes sense to a certain extent because these thresholds are changed. When you go to the district dashboard, or I'm sorry, the California data dashboard, you'll also see something new this year, which is the English Learner Progress Indicator, or the LP. And they didn't change the LPAC levels. You still have Level 1, 2, 3, and 4, but they wanted a way to show, uh, growth over time. And there's a big, you know, there's a, a lot of space between going from Level 2 to Level 3 and Level 3 to Level 4. And so what they did is they created these LP levels, which now has, uh, like, kind of Low 2 versus High 2, Low 3 versus High 3, and then Level 4. So now we have 6 levels, just to add a little bit of fun to it. And when you go to the dashboard, I actually pulled this off of our dashboard. It'll show you, um, the, um, how many students are making progress toward proficiency. So we're looking at how many kids increased or decreased a level, one of the LP levels, not one of the LPAC levels. Um, or if they were maintaining, or if they've been at 4 and maintained it 4. So 37.9% of HUSD students either main, uh, progressed at least one LP level or were able to maintain Level 4. We also looked at, um, how we compared, uh, with other districts, the county and the state. So, um, we are at, uh, 61% of our students scoring at Level 3 and 4. I compared, I compared with Sonoma Valley and Windsor Unified, who are at 56 and 54%, respectively. Sonoma County's at 58% and the state's at 54%. So as of right now, um, we are, you know, we're, we're in comparison with the state, in comparison with like schools in our county, we have a lot of students scoring in those higher levels. So, um, below the overall score, you have the oral and the written language domains. So on this chart, it shows how, as a district, we broke down as far as scoring levels 1, 2, 3, and 4. And so you'll notice that oral language, uh, you know, we tended to score stronger there. 67% of our students scored a 3 or a 4 in oral language versus 47% in written, which in a way makes sense because if you think about how we learn language, we learn to speak and listen before we learn to read and write. And so, um, we saw a similar trend last year as well. These are the subdomains below that. So the reading, writing, speaking, and listening. You can see that the speaking, uh, is definitely an area of strength for our students. And the speaking test is, um, you know, especially for the upper grades, is the only test that's given one-on-one and it's quite challenging. And so this speaks highly to what we're doing, how our kids are prepared in that section. All right, now to get into, uh, the individual schools. So, uh, this is Healdsburg Elementary and Charter, grades TK through 2, so the, the Healdsburg Elementary campus. Um, we combine them due to the small sample size in HCS. Uh, there's 45 ELs in Charter, grades K through 5 total versus 161 in HES. So it makes more sense to combine the data. Uh, if you take a look, we've got TK and kindergarten, they're, they, they take the same test at that level. Uh, 66% scored a 3 or 4. In first grade, it was 65% and in second grade, 58%. And then moving on to, um, Fitch Mountain Campus, so grades 3, 4, and 5. We had at third grade, 82% of our students scoring in a 3 or 4, which I'm sure speaks a lot to what Karen's doing. Good job, Karen. Um, and you'll also, and then, um, 71% in fourth grade and 59% in fifth grade. And you'll notice also that the cohort size really, or the class size really changes. We go from having 34 third graders to 22 fifth graders. And so, uh, you know, we're, we're getting smaller, but then as students are reclassifying, our group of ELs is shrinking. At Jun, at Healdsburg Junior High, we tested 65 students. Um, our school remained roughly the same size, give or take about seven students. Uh, 41% of our sixth graders, um, achieved Level 3 or 4, 40% of seventh grade, and 60%... 63% of eighth grade. And the students that are scoring, um, in the red are generally students who either are a student with disability or they've been in the, not been in the country very long. And at Healdsburg High School, I combined Healdsburg and Marcy Vissera, just because Marcy's numbers are really low, too. Um, we had in ninth grade, there were only four, but 75% of them scored either a 3 or a 4. Uh, in 10th grade, it was 28%. Uh, 11th grade, it's 50%, and 12th grade, it's 60%. But at this point, we have, I mean, we had 22 overall, uh, ELs tested, both between Healdsburg High School and Marcy Vissera. So it's a pretty small number. So we use this data, uh, to help us inform, uh, or help inform us when students are ready to be reclassified. And in our district, we have, um, four criteria for reclassification. Uh, the first one is they have to score, excuse me. They have to score an overall, um, 4 in the LPAC. Uh, the next one is a teacher evaluation, and this looks a little bit different depending on the grades, but, um, in general, uh, you know, students in 6 through 12 need to have passing grades in their ELD and ELA classes. And then in K through 5, um, they're, uh, looking at their standards-based report card and making sure they're on par. Uh, parental opinion and consultation is always a part of this. We want to make sure that parents are on board and they feel like it's, like, like their child is ready to exit the program. And then we have the performance, or the comparison of performance of, in basic skills. So if it's not CASP data, um, it might be a DRA or using STAR literacy, uh, for grades, um, you know, for, uh, the grades where CASP data is relevant. We do have, um, or given, we have CASP data cutoffs and it's 50% up through, um, the Level 2 in CASP. And, um, so when all four criteria are met, that's when we would talk about, uh, that's when we would reclassify a student. And, um, we are going to be, uh, transitioning to a computer-based LPAC this year. So this is, for the past two years, it's all been pencil and paper. This year is the brave new frontier of computer-based. It's going to be really similar to CASP. It's using the same online system and so kids and teachers will hopefully be familiar, um, with the user interface. Uh, Fitch Mountain and the junior high actually participated in a field test, uh, back in October, where, um, we, we had students actually taking either parts of the test or the whole test online, uh, so that we could get a first look at it. And, um, it, it looks pretty similar. A lot of the questions are exactly the same. They added a few new items, uh, such as, uh, in the speaking portion, there is, um, they added another, uh, uh, section, you know, for kids to talk about, or summarizing an academic, academic presentation. Instead of doing one, now they're doing two. Um, the cut points from this year to, or last year to this year will remain the same. So at that point, we're going to have three years of data and we're going to start being able to measure growth on the dashboard and, um, internally. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question. So is, has there been any analysis? I know that's just, just came out. Just got this in work, but any analysis of why 28.2% have regressed, have gone down in their scores?
Not yet. I mean, we're, that's definitely something that we're looking into and, you know, with the ELD external evaluation happening, we're really curious to, um, you know, get advice and to, um, figure out what we can do to support these kids that are going down in scores because that's obviously problematic.
Yeah, I'm curious if it's in one domain or the other. I'm just curious.
And it is an LP level? It's not a full level? It's one of those little mini-levels, sub-levels?
No, it's a whole LP level.
It's a LP level.
LP.
At least one LP level.
Isn't that a little?
So it could be, yeah. It could be a little.
You're right.
Could be high-low.
Mm-hmm.
One to two-low, to two-high, to three-low.
Yeah.
But still, it's a decrease.
It's a decrease.
It's a decrease.
I'm just curious if it's more of the writing or the reading or if there's, you know? I'm curious.
I haven't, I haven't dove that deep yet, but I can look into it and get back to you.
I've, it's, again, I keep thinking about this in terms of what does it mean, right? I mean, this is a, a data point we use and really depend on for the reclassification. And, and it is a standardized data point across the state, which is a really good thing. But it's really hard to look at grade to grade and even school to school because maybe we get a bunch of newcomers one year. Maybe, uh, it's...
Yeah, I was going to say, um, to your, to your question, that the, the teachers, I think, are more aware than Erin as the district coordinator in terms of looking at that student-level data and individual kids of the domains and where their strengths are and where their challenges are and what the changes. Certainly, there's work to do in understanding the data and using it to inform instruction. So we're right there, but the teachers are looking at that student-level data and, and really designing, you know, their, what's going on and where they need to be spending more time writing or reading. I'll say, uh, over the last couple of years, we have been spending more time on reading in particular and writing because we've seen it as an area where we could do better.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Great. Erin, thank you so much for walking us through that. That's a lot to explain. We appreciate that very much. Goodbye, Madam President. You are taking, okay. Enjoy.
You're fine.
All right, moving on to, uh, 13C, Healdsburg High School Plan for Student Achievement. Principal Halliday.
Hello again.
Hello.
I'm going to go through, um, Healdsburg High School, um, single plan of student achievement goals, then I'm going to go through the Marcy Vissera, um, goals. As I'm apt to do, I'll be brief in my remarks. And so if you have any questions as I'm going through the presentation, please feel free to interrupt me, okay?
Thank you.
If you have any questions. A little bit about the process, uh, just a reminder that these, um, goals are discussed by our leadership team, which is our heads of departments at the high school. They're also discussed at our governance council. And they're also discussed at our LPAC committees. And all those committees have given input to all the goals that you'll be before you tonight. Okay. Healdsburg High School. Goal number one is, again, about supporting our students and paying attention to our achievement gaps for our critical subgroups. We're consistently looking at our gaps. We're consistent in looking at improving our programs to address these gaps, including improving our ELD program. We have a, for the third year, I believe, Erin, if not the second year, a sole advisor supporting our English learning students. This year, it's Ms. Forkini, who's working on this program. Previously, it was Mr. Gunter, working with our students who've been ARFEP'd but are in our high school program. We monitor them through to their graduation, making sure that they're making adequate improvement and supporting them, uh, as we need to. We're going to continue to review of our IEP process, reviewing our goal-setting, reviewing our communication to our special education students and their family, ensuring that the goals set at the, at the IEP sessions are attended to through their coursework. We are, uh, continue to be an avid school with an avid classroom in each grade level and, um, continue to look to ways that we can improve that program. We're also, um, really working on, uh, supporting diversity and, um, equity in our leadership positions on the school. We're going to talk about that a little bit more in goal number five. And also in our leadership opportunities at school and also in our most academically rigorous courses, ensuring that all students have equal access to our AP and a full college preparatory program. And then, as you know, we've had previous presentations, there's a lot of energy put towards supporting college and career preparatory work all, through all four years. Math. You talk about, a lot about math. We're following along with our consultant, Dr. Bowler, um, really on a school-wide focus of math, taking a lot of lead from the district-wide math committee, who's given us recommendations for action steps. Really working on a, a school-wide mathematical mindset where we increase, decrease the number of adults who say, "I'm not a math person," increase the number of students who say, "I am a math person," increase the number of students who are willing to take academic risks in the ma, mathematical field. Common core instruction and problem-solving is difficult in our integrated math classes and we need to, we need to have confident kids and we need to have adults around them who are demonstrating that confidence to take on, um, those challenges. Uh, working on articulation between our math, Integrated Math 1, Integrated Math 2, Integrated Math 3, uh, with our teachers and also working on cross-curricular activities, like our math teachers go to a different department meeting every month and conduct a math lesson for other subject area teachers to understand different ways that they can bring mathematical problem-solving into their instruction, uh, you know, outside of a traditional math classroom. And then, um, we have different tiers of intervention and support, including not just after-school tutorial, which is very difficult to get students to, but what type of intervention classes are we going to continue to create and what kind of support do we have, both during the course of the school day and through online resources and additionally tutoring? Benchmarks. Goal of our benchmarks is to collect data to inform instruction and chart our students' progress. We currently have, um, benchmarks in all of our English classes, four benchmarks a year. Ideally, we'll go through a year without a fire and this year, we're going to have three benchmarks because of the disruption, again, seems like the story of the year. We also have, uh, critical benchmarks three times a year in, in Integrated Math 1, 2, and 3. We have, uh, benchmark, uh, utilized in our Spanish classes and an immense amount of data collection and benchmarking in our physical education programs. Mark Domenicali's been doing this for years and our new, uh, PE teacher, Josh Kavanaugh, has really taken a lead role and following his example in, uh, utilizing all sorts of data, collecting, uh, assessments to, um, assist kids in improving in their, their physical, um, fitness and also their nutritional and health awareness. Science and social studies are, uh, quite frankly, a work in progress. One of the challenges we have is a small school, is we have standalone science teachers, we have standalone history and social studies teacher, and it's hard to benchmark, you know, in, in a void. That's why it's easier to do it when we have multiple sections of English 9, multiple sections and different teachers of the math classes. But we're working on that. And then our long-term goal for this year is to really have a school-wide, um, school-wide data plan, meaning how do we use our data? How does it inform our instruction? How does it charter students' progress? And try to find some consistency through departments. More consistency through departments. Goal number four is really that our classrooms look, act, and feel like innovative organizations in the real world. That there's relevance and there's interactions that we hope our students will see when they go on to, into the university level and also into their career pathways. That includes a focus on problem-solving, collaboration. It continues to have a focus on use of technology, um, not just to record information, but to assist with the problem-solving process. We're developing, uh, better foundation for common tech expectations. What should students be able to do by the end of grade 9, 10, 11, and 12? And where are the areas where we see gaps in their stu, in students' tech? We continue with, uh, professional development for staff and really increasing a focus for teacher-to-teacher, um, assistance, professional development and support to assist teachers who may be less confident incorporating more technology into their instruction. And then, um, something that's new for this year around this goal is there's an increased number of our staff members who really feel that we need to incorporate, actually, um, specific tech skills in keyboarding in our instruction. We find certain students are held back because of really poor keyboarding skills, while others can move ahead. And goal number five is really about culture and community, parent communication, student communication, and student involvement. Or on the communication platform, in increasing, not increasing, but improving, um, PSL, Power School Learning, communication from teacher to student and from teacher to parent, to have that be really, uh, a very powerful window for students and their families to understand what's ahead in their classes, what's the goals, what's the scope and the sequence of a course, versus just the reflective look that families get in areas in our grade, grading platform, which is just, frankly, looking to see what assignments your, your child missed. Culture, as you know, we started the, the year with an activity day for... As you know, we started the year with an activity day for all students. We're trying to make sure the students not just feel welcome, they feel like they have a viable, healthy place to be on campus, that they have a passion about something outside of just their seven classes, that they're involved in activities. As you saw, we have a huge number of students who are involved in sports. We actually have an increase in students in our activity groups and increase in activity groups this year. And we want to encourage that. And we believe a lot of the work that we put in in trying to build a sense of belonging to the school has assisted that. We'll continue. We'll have another team-building day, I believe it's on January 13th. We'll have our vertical groups and we'll have our activity groups and then some all-school activities to encourage that. As always, a large number of parent and community meetings, both informative about issues at hand and concerns that parents may have. And also, just your traditional, you know, eighth-grade parent night, ninth-grade parent night, senior parent night. You know, "Oh, my God, we're gonna make it through" night for senior parents. And then, last but not least on parent engagement is we've been very fortunate. And thanks to HEF and thanks to the board and thanks to the district for supporting our community liaisons. And we're working with ESPY to really reach out to our families, in particular, our families that are struggling with attendance consistency, with grading consistency, potentially behavioral consistency, and see what our school can do to partner with those families to have more success for their students. And again, great, great thanks to ESPY for joining us, and that's been a good start in that area. So those are the five for the high school. Any questions before I move on?
No question, but just, well, I guess it is a question. So you said something really important. You talked about how there is a need for creation of a course or unit of instruction for teaching basic technology skills. And I'm wondering if there's a plan to support that even before high school? Because I just worry about how everything is shifting to technology. The CASP is already computer-based, the LPAC is gonna become computer-based. And I worry that we're not gonna have a clear picture of what students can do because they don't know how to use a tool. So I know it's not your initiative for the high school, but I think it'll support your work at the high school if we have a plan.
Yeah, so three years ago, this board passed the HUSD Technology Information Literacy Standards. And so I'd say, three years ago, right before you came onto the board, it was a much bigger focus through that process. Then we looked to, okay, now that we have the standards, what are the curriculum materials we're gonna be using? So we've been using learning.com. And with learning.com, we also administer the 21st Century Skills Assessment. There's both a pre and a post-test. It's lengthy. There's a lot going on in that software. It's almost too rich of a piece of curriculum. We, you know, I feel like we've got the standards, we've got a nice curricular resource. It's a matter, honestly, about time, right? Time in the day. That's where we're at, and that's, I think, what most of the teachers in the classroom will tell you, is that I know what the standards are. I have a resource. I have a curriculum. I just need to figure out when I'm gonna put it in the day. Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a good question. And years ago, we had an innovative design team around technology and career readiness. And one of the developments of that is what should a student be able to do in the technology realm at different grade levels as they go through school? And that, it wasn't an easy job to identify that. It was difficult, but you can identify that. But then the challenge is, is it a class? Who's the teacher? How many hours a week? Where does it fit in? And when you get into a high school schedule, it's already so pinched with time and seven classes. It becomes more and more challenging to do that.
Irritated that we even have that expectation at elementary. It's like, really let them just be students and write their responses. They're learning, but we don't have control over everything, darn it.
That's a good question, though. All right, any other questions for Bill on the high school plan before he moves on to the Marcy plan? All right, great. Thank you, Bill. All right, we're ready for Marcy.
Thank you, Steve. One last time. As you're well aware, students who go to Marcy Vissera are credit-deficient, and they're at risk for not graduating. The primary goal of Marcy always will be and always has been to help students accelerate their ability to earn credits, make up for classes that they failed or missed in the past, and increase the graduation rate. I can come here for another 10 years, and that goal will never change for that program. But I also added to this in my notes around completion rates, because we do have some students who come to us in circumstances where getting the Marcy diploma, even though it's a little bit less than the Healdsburg High School diploma, is really not viable for their plan. They've missed so much, or their life circumstances have gotten to a place where really getting a diploma is not gonna happen even in two years in Marcy. So some of our students just look for a completion rate, and they take, they study for what's called the HISA now, GED, or they take the California Proficiency Test. We have one student currently who's, has already passed two of the components of the proficiency test. So we really wanna look at both graduation rates and completion rate there. Instructional and support strategies for graduation rates. We have to provide for our students in Marcy all the power of a quality educational program that all the students at Healdsburg High School get. This is why, thanks, Chris, for years ago, the Marcy Vissera students are no longer kind of banished to one side of the campus. They're fully immersed in our campus. They take three to four of their courses on the traditional campus. They're eligible to participate in sports if they're academically eligible, they're in activities, they're in clubs, they come to our rallies. They are a member of our community in full, except that they're stressed out that they might not graduate, and they need a special program to catch up on credits. To that end, that program has to provide for them everything that every one of our students get, which is not, quite frankly, the history of alternative education in California. And we really work on doing that. And then, we're gonna talk a little bit more on goal three about big-picture learning. You remember the presentation that Erin and I brought you a couple of months ago. But a real emphasis on college and career readiness and making what they're doing in the classroom more relevant to their steps right outside their completion rate, right outside their graduation day. Almost 100% of these students don't go on to four-year universities. They may eventually get there, but they don't go there right after high school. They may go on to the JSE, they may go on to a technical training program. So these 25 or less students, they're the most critical component to them is that they have a clear pathway and good informed decision-making ability when they do complete Marcy. They don't have a couple of years at a nice university, "What major am I gonna be?" They've gotta get out there right now and have a goal and have a path. The primary, the primary cause of our students who are behind in credit is inconsistent attendance. Woody Allen said, you know, 85% of success is showing up on time at the right place, right? Our Marcy students have a really difficult time being consistent in their life, and that transfers to consistency in school. So there's a lot of efforts put forward to improve attendance. One is to create a dynamic program that they want to attend. One is to have the CTE component, so they can be in construction, they can be in culinary, they can be digital arts, they can have a real hand-on, exciting aspect to their day. And part of it is frankly just hounding them and calling them and calling their parents and sending the letters home and working with ESPY as a community liaison, working with our KISS support program, Keep Our Kids in School program, and making sure that these students know that it's important they're there every day, we care about them, they're part of our community, and we miss you when you're gone, and your graduation is not gonna come any sooner if you make it only 70% of the time. That's another goal. If I do this for 10 more years, that will still be there every year at Marcy Vissera. And then, the final goal for Marcy is really about the development of our big-picture model. And again, if you recall the meeting we presented a couple of months ago, Erin and I were introduced to this program. Chris has been introduced to this program previous, too, which is a student-interest-driven course of study through high school. And students are surveyed, the teacher is not a teacher, the teacher is your advisor. Your advisor works with you for four years, works with you. In our program, it would be for the final two years, works on your senior project, which is basically your portfolio and your presentation that you present before you receive your diploma. Incorporated into that is a huge component of externships, internships, and work experiences out in the community, again, driven by student interest. I was fortunate enough to go to a conference in Seattle last week where we got to, I got to go to a portfolio presentation of 17 high school seniors and what their projects were. And it was nothing short of inspirational, to see how passionate these students were about the pathway that they had created for themselves towards graduation. And truancy or not coming to school or not fulfilling your commitment was not an option because it was their program. They had created it with advice, with mentors, with lots of support. But it was absolutely a program that they were invested in. Hopefully, in a year or two, we'll see something similar in our program.
That'd be great. Any questions for Principal Halliday?
No, I'm really glad to see the integration of our high school students from Marcy into the opportunities that the regular high school gives them. And I really applaud the work that you're doing. It's exciting to, I like the big picture.
Thank you.
Nice.
It is exciting.
I did owe that. Thank you for your energy.
Okay.
Very much. Thank you, Principal Halliday.
Oh, Bill, I actually meant to talk about this at the Healdsburg High School Plan. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that there is a new scholarship for a math major coming out of Healdsburg High School. And the funder of that is really hoping that there's going to be somebody to offer that to. But I thought that you could make sure that your math teachers know that that scholarship is now, it's a big scholarship, is sitting out there, and it's new. And he really would like to kind of expand that, so...
We're probably just a week away about making a very exciting announcement about a university placement for one of our students who will be choosing math as their major.
Yeah, so there's this new scholarship.
Great. Thank you, Principal Halliday. All right, moving on to item 13E, Equity Update, Superintendent Van den Hoofel.
So I'm gonna briefly update you on the work that's going around equity in the district. First off, the elementary school design team is nearing the end of its work. Again, I wanna remind you that what they're doing is basically a listening campaign with the community and culling tons of input, and you have a list of different stakeholder groups that they've solicited input from. And from there, looking at what the community, what our staff want in their elementary school and bringing that to the board. And the question is, what do we want in elementary school? And once the board sets those parameters, then it'll be on us as the staff to really engage in the details of the how are we gonna make this happen? We are looking to bring a proposal to you in January at the January board meeting. It would be a discussion item only. We wouldn't be making a proposal right then and there. And then, hopefully, finalizing sort of the defining, the definition of what our elementary school's gonna look like in February, so that families have time to make elementary school decisions with placement and that we have time to be able to make placements with our staff, because in March is when we start making staffing decisions. So that is the timeline on that. And she's not here, but I wanna commend Erica McGuire for her work on that. She's done a great job, and the entire committee really has worked hard. And they have one more meeting to go where they're refining the input that they're gonna give. But it's exciting work, and it's been a long time coming, and pleased to be almost there. Erin Ryan, who you heard from earlier on the LPAC, is leading the community development team. They have met twice now, and they are developing OKRs. Her husband is actually a professional project manager, and so he's helped her engage in how do you manage this big thing? And so they are looking to define the objectives for their team and what the key results, how will they measure success? What would that look like? And I talked to her at length about that, and, you know, the team fully recognizes this is gonna be kind of a multi-year endeavor, but exciting stuff nonetheless. So we are moving rapidly to some pretty big changes in the district and happy to take any questions if you have them.
I had a couple of quick questions. Do we have the date for the next community development team meeting? Oh, excellent. Would you mind sharing that with us? Thanks, Erin.
While she's doing, I do wanna say, we actually have a really nice new tradition. I think this is the second year, it might be the third, but the elementary school winter performances. We had a wonderful performance yesterday at HES, and the grade-level students together singing songs. One of them even performed Cascabel, which is Jingle Bells in Spanish. It was just a wonderful evening of everybody together kind of enjoying the holiday spirit. So I wanna commend both sites, FMC and HES, the staff there, because I know it's a heavy lift for the teachers and the staff. But it is really a unifying experience, community building, so pertains to equity. Erin, did you find that date? There we go.
And where do you hold those, Erin?
And then, Chris, can you remind me when the ELD evaluation is gonna happen?
So that is, I wanna say, January 21st, that week. Christine Nichols, when she'll be visiting. Yeah, so January 21st to 24th. Again, we were hopeful to have it in October, and then fires happened. So it was put off, and she's coming now in January. So we're really excited to have her and have her see what we're doing and listen to her and see what input she has for us in terms of improvement, how we can serve our students.
Thank you.
One other comment I wanted to make was about the January board meeting when this presentation is slotted to be shared with the public, correct? That you spoke of? I just wanted to make sure that we did all that we could to invite folks to come and hear that at the board meeting.
And we'll make sure to get the materials out, too, so that they're not just...
That'd be great.
Stuck in a board packet on page 250, right? So, yeah, we'll make sure that parents understand what's going on and have ample time if they wanna give input into the process.
Right, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, any other questions for Superintendent Van den Hoofel? All right, so at this time, then, we will ask for reports. So HEF report, Miss Sally.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you very much. I am happy to be here, and I wanted to start out by thanking, I guess, past President Kef now for her role as the HEF liaison for the last year, I guess. I've only been here for a few months, but...
It was fun.
She's been incredible and very appreciated in that role. And I just wanted to give you a formal thanks on behalf of the HEF board.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Secondly, I wanted to thank the entire community. I've met so many of the trustees and community members that have just been amazing, the principals, the teachers at the schools, to help onboard me. I've now been here for three months, so I'm no longer the new girl. So gloves off, everybody bring it on. I'm gonna roll up my sleeves and get to work. I did wanna report tonight that I'm very excited, even with a slow start, with me being new and with the disruption of the fires, we are already well over $100,000 toward our programmatic goal. We had some very generous donors that put $42,000 up for a match for our annual year-end campaign. And we're halfway there. We've raised $21,000. So for all of those $21,000 that were given, we were able to match those with our donors that stepped up for that. Overall, we have commitments for over $200,000 for the year already. We've got some great momentum. My main goal is just to really continue to strengthen this partnership with HUSD. We want to be the voice in the community that really shines the light on the incredible things that are happening in our schools. We wanna do a better job of letting the community know what HEF does and why we are needed and really talk about the great things that are happening in our schools. And I'm not gonna go on and on tonight, but I do wanna ask everyone here and everyone in the room to please support HEF in our goals. And it's not just money. That's my job to raise money. But we also wanna be advocates. We wanna create cheerleaders in the community that know what is happening and can speak in the community about the great things that are happening and some of the not-so-great things that are happening. But we wanna make sure that the conversations that are happening are educated conversations and that we are bringing people to the table, we are bringing more volunteers to the teams, and that we are having people come into our schools and tour and see for themselves the great things that are happening. So I'm here. I'm still very excited to be a part of the HEF team, and I know my board echoes my thoughts. So thank you all very much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Sally.
Questions for me that I can defer to someone else to answer?
I just appreciate having you on board.
Thank you.
You've lived through a fire now, so you're not the new girl anymore.
I had my own personal one.
Oh, that's right. I forgot, yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, she's a go-getter, that one. And I echo, please, anyone, support HEF in any way that you can. They do incredible work for our district. So if you have any questions, reach out to Sally. So if you have any questions, reach out to Sally on ways that you could fill a need. All right, Hada, this evening. Are you filling in? Okay, thank you. And then our student trustee is sick and studying for his calc final. Do the Board of Trustees have anything that they would like to share this evening?
I just wanted to comment that I had the privilege of going to both of the winter performances, the Fitch Mountain Winter Performance and the HES last night. And they were both absolutely wonderful. Teachers do work hard, the kids perform beautifully. And one of the things that I commented to Chris about last night that I take particular pleasure in are those little tiny people experiencing the high school gymnasium and knowing, because we say that to them, this is going to be your high school. And it's that development of that community spirit that, starting with TK all the way up, that these are our schools and they are a part of this huge community. Well, I guess it's a small community, but when you're five, it looks pretty big. It's a wonderful thing that happens in developing here in Hillsburg. And I just love those kids, they're all terrific. They really are fun. So please convey my thanks to your staff for two delightful evenings in Fitch Mountain still. I think it lasted 35 minutes. You guys do it. It takes a little longer to get the kindergartners and first graders on enough.
It took pretty well, 45 minutes. I'm not as eloquent as Trustee Velazquez, but I have two words for those two concerts that I was able to attend that I walked away with. And I think I shared an email to both principals separately, but for FMC, I walked away with love. It was like, wow. And with HES, I walked away with joy. And I told Principal McGuire, I said, I went home after that concert and I went down to the basement and I took out the holiday decorations. My wife's going, what are you going to do? We got to do this. And then last night, again, just coming home and saying, this was just, it was just wonderful. That's all I can say. I'm going to thank the kids. I want to thank the staff. I don't know how you do that. How do you do that with kindergartners? How do you do that with, you know, third graders, fourth graders? But it was just exciting. And so it's not just the kids, it's the whole community. And then you turn and you look at all the parents and you look at all the friends and the grandparents. It was just exciting and thrilling, and I thank you all.
Sorry that Greta's not here to see this, but Greta Messick's hosted Open Library Night on her campus, the ninth, I think, of December. So I know she plans to do more of those, so I look forward to that. I was not in attendance, but it looked great, great fun. Be there the next time. All right, anyone else have anything else? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, so we'll be back at 7:40 on the dot, so five-minute break, thank you.
You got two gavels, too, to make sure, yeah.
I know you are. That was me telling you we're getting started.
Yes.
I know, I knew you knew. All right, school business, item 13.2A, Hillsburg Unified School District Safe School Plan.
So this is just an annual update for the Safe School Plan. Every year, we continue to improve and analyze our safety practices and protocols. Some highlights this year, well, one thing we always do is we create a new ICS or Incident Command System because we have new staff and everybody's assigned a task. Rob Smith has led the charge on these Stop Bleed kits that have been added to the sites. So they are kits that would stop profuse amounts of bleeding should there be an emergency that requires it. We have been refining over the last few years our lockdown procedures as best practices have changed. We've talked about that at Board Meetings in the past, so we continue to practice those same procedures. Been monitoring wildfire safety, smoke protocols. Actually, a lot of work went in since the last safety plan into smoke protocols, both at the county level. I was active on a superintendence group to develop guidelines that were actually adopted by the state around smoke protocols. And finally, we're learning how to deal with power outages. Thankfully, in Hillsburg, it hasn't affected us too much in the city limits. I live outside the city limit, so it's been fun to come in with no electricity at home and have electricity at work. But that is something that we're having to deal with now also and really take a look at practices. When can we have school and can we not have school, depending on if we have power or not? So things continue to change, as always. We are, we've provided you with some of the updates that are in the plan and we need to, this is just a preliminary discussion, we're going to be providing those in January to both Hillsburg Police Department, Hillsburg Fire Department. They review our plans and give us any feedback and then we'll bring them for your approval in February.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Van den Hoofel? All right, great, then we will move on to item B, Positives, Certification of Ability to Meet Financial Obligations at First Interim. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, and thank you. So I thought for my formal, my final presentation on the budget, we would do maybe a 20-minute deep dive into property taxes, if that's okay.
Or not. No, that's not okay?
Good, thank you. Okay. This item kind of, this slide kind of leads into the next item as well in terms of the budget cycle. I've been looking for a slide like this for a long time and actually I found one somewhere north of here, and so I stole it and put it in our presentation.
We're glad to see where your loyalties lie.
Absolutely. So it's kind of a good overview of where we are in the cycle. And the nice little "we are here" is kind of helpful to know that we are working at first interim as we go through the 1920 budget cycle. And then next month, we're starting the 2021 budget cycle already for the Governor's Budget Proposal, which will be fascinating, and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a few minutes. Anyway, I thought it was kind of a cool slide for people who don't know our budget cycle. You guys have all heard it so much from me that you guys can repeat it in your sleep probably, so anyway. So what has changed as our initial budget back in June? Well, actually quite a bit. We closed the books on 1819, we've had some revenue changes, we've had some staffing and staffing cost changes, we've had some changes in other expenses. We made a couple of little philosophical switches or shifts, and then we need to talk about the Kincaid fire a little bit. So as you recall, back in September, we closed the books on 1819 and our ending balance came in much higher than we'd projected, 1.1 million higher than we thought, which was great news. I would like to have been a little closer on the budget, but there were enough surprises in there that it made sense. And if we're going to get surprised, we're going to get surprised in a good way, not in a bad way. So we finished 1819 with reserves of 21.6%, which is exciting because it gives us a chance to do something for our employees and weather some storms, which unfortunately we're having to weather, so.
Yep.
Taking a quick look at property taxes, not 20 minutes, I promise. In terms of the base property taxes, we've projected a minor increase for this year, 22,000, not much of a change. We're projecting a pretty dramatic increase in RDA. We're kind of going away from the advice we get from SCO a little bit, we're getting a little more aggressive in our budgeting. We feel like we have enough history now, and I'll jump into some more detail in just a second. So overall, with RDA, our property taxes are up almost three-quarters of a million from what we budgeted back in June. So only one chart, and that'll be it, I promise. Looking at the RDA revenues, while we consider this one-time money, we consider it at a risk, the trend is getting more and more predictable. You can see, starting in, if you look at the third column over the total column, you see we kind of hit the low watermark in 2015, 16 of 1. almost 5 million. Since then, it's been a pretty good progression in the right direction for us. But then we get through 1819 and SCO tells us, only budget half of what you got last year. Well, that is the conservative thing to do, but it's not the realistic thing to do. If we use that as the basis of our budget, it changes what we can do for our staff, it changes how we implement programs, and it's just not realistic anymore. We have enough history now to where we're confident that we can go higher than 50% and still feel good about it. While we still don't know what the January distribution is going to be exactly, I do have a contact at the Treasurer's Office who always gives me a little sneak peek and he's usually within a $10,000, $20,000 on one way or the other. So we're thinking that the January distribution will be almost $2 million, up about $100,000 over last year. So again, it's still trending in the right direction. So that also gives us some confidence to go ahead and budget more aggressively. So even if we don't get the $679,000 that we're forecasting now for June, that's a really low number compared to the $905,000 we got last year. We think we're pretty safe. RDA is still a bit of a black box, that's the one caution I do want to leave you with. It's hard to get information about the RDA is still paying off. There could be a balloon payment coming out there at some point that could impact how much money we're going to get in the short term. That's why the good reserves that we have are really important to keep those going because there could still be a hiccup in this, but we don't see it coming and we can't find out if it is coming, so. But I think overall, we're okay. So we did budget 75% of the most recent distribution. So going forward, we're budgeting 75% of what we're getting, we believe, this January and 75% of what we got last June. So more aggressive than, and SCO's already given me a little disclaimer saying, hey, I foreshadowed this to them and they said, you know what we're going to say, and so here it is, but it's okay. So we feel pretty confident about that. Some other revenue changes. Governor Newsom's been kind of interesting so far. One of the things he got rid of when he came into office was the one-time funds we were getting. If you'll recall, we got some pretty significant quote-unquote "one-time money" every year, which I guess therefore isn't really one-time money. But he said we weren't going to do that anymore, right? We're not going to give you unstrung money. If we're going to give you money, you're going to have to do something with it, if we do. Then he comes out this year and gives us the Special Education Early Intervention Preschool Grant, roughly $9,000 per preschool special ed student we had last year. For special ed, it comes into the unrestricted general fund with no strings on it. We can spend it however we want to. Their hope is that we're going to spend it paying off our encroachment from special ed. So that's ultimately what it's going to go to, right? Because that's where a lot of our discretionary funds go to. But it's just interesting that he's now got this model of no one-time funds, but here's some one-time money. So one of the things to watch for next month is, is this one-time money going to happen a second time? So we'll see. Some other revenue changes, the CTE incentive grant that funds a lot of our CTE programs at the high school. We had no idea what we were going to get, even though the 1819 grant, we still weren't sure of the amount. So we only budgeted 3,000 to cover the expenses we put in, but we know now we're getting $192,000. So on the restricted side, you're going to see a big jump in revenue and a big jump in expense. The other thing you'll see in there that kind of really distorts the numbers is this K-12 Strong Workforce Program. If you'll recall, we are the paying agent for this consortium of schools all over the North Coast, so this money isn't all for us. Some of it will go to our program, but we're one of nine districts that'll be sharing this money. But we do get to collect in indirect off of this, so we do get to make some money just for paying a few bills. Hopefully Debbie won't be too busy with this. On the staffing side, our staffing costs have gone up since the initial budget. We did have to add a new kindergarten class, a new teacher, a new para. We also added a few sections at the high school that we didn't have budgeted in June. And also, some of the staff that we hired cost us a little more than we anticipated. We tried to budget kind of middle-of-the-road for placement, but in some cases, we got some really high-end staff and we paid them a little more because of that, but that's a great thing, right? Also, since June, we didn't have the final STIRS or PIRS rates for this year. STIRS got a little more expensive, PIRS got a little less expensive. It would help our budget more if it was the other way around, but that's how it shook out. So you can see, PIRS, our STIRS is up 0.4% and PIRS is down a little over 1%. And not huge impacts on our budget, but it does matter. Other expenses, you'll see the materials and supplies and services and other operating expenditures are up, combination of carryover balances now being budgeted and those new grants and grant amounts that we talked about getting now spent. So we'll skew those numbers. You'll also see some money in capital expenditures that wasn't there before. We had to go off and buy a new van and a new wheelchair bus to support the special ed kids that we are now transporting ourselves because we can't count on North County Consortium or anyone else to transport them for us. So we've had to invest in ourselves. We've also been, received two grants for electric buses. The first one finally showed up, I think, last week, the next one will show up in the spring. There is a little cost to us. The buses cost about $420,000. The grant pays $400,000. So we're getting a new bus for $20,000. It seems like a pretty good use of our one-time special ed money, if nothing else, so. Anyway, yeah. So philosophically, we've kind of changed the way we're presenting some of the numbers to you. We used to kind of have a combination of funds sitting in Fund 17, which is kind of our savings account, and some money sitting in the general fund, which is kind of our checking account. There wasn't a lot of rhyme or reason to what was in there. Starting with this version of the budget, we want to start really putting just the 13.33% that you've mandated as our reserves, put that in Fund 17. That way, it's not in the general fund, but no more is there either. It's just what the reserves are supposed to be. Everything else will show up in the general fund as unrestricted, undesignated dollars. So it kind of helps us kind of understand where we are at a glance, a little more clearly. Philosophically, too, I'm going to foreshadow the next slide briefly. I think there's some reason to think about increasing our reserves at some point. Kind of, in a way, I hate to say that because 13.33 is a really healthy reserve and a good place to be, but I think there's a couple compelling reasons to think about doing a little more.
Oh, I was just going to ask you about.
Yeah.
About that, increasing that.
Yeah, so we'll jump there now. So the Kincaid fire. So we have been told by the County Treasurer's Office to expect our base property taxes to drop by about $400,000 starting next year. And our understanding is that that's not a one-time hit, that's a permanent rebasing of our property taxes due to the properties that were lost in the fire. So that will be an ongoing reduction in our property taxes.
Until properties are rebuilt and reassessed, which they said after Tubbs, it took two years to get to 50% of the assessed value back on the books. So it's a, it's going to be, it will slow our growth of property tax revenue, so.
Definitely will, so. And then we've had a couple other issues with the fires. Because of the fires in 2017, our property and liability insurance went up $74,000 this year. And quite frankly, we were lucky, I'll use quotes, to even get insurance in some cases. It's getting harder and harder for districts and the state to get the reinsurer market to support our different levels.
And it's not very good insurance.
The next bullet, right, talks about, so part of the renewal of our property and liabilities, not only did it go up $74,000, and that was like from 175 to 250, so it's a big jump in terms of percentage increase. We didn't used to have a deductible for wildfires. If there was a wildfire, if there was some smoke damage, the insurance would have paid every penny of it. Well, that changed, there's now a $5 million deductible as of July 1st of last year. It is now catastrophic insurance. It is not insurance to help cover anything else, right?
And this is, it's worth noting, this is the same for every school district in the county. So we're part of RESIG, the Redwood Empire Schools Insurance Group, who shops for coverage for all of us and we are all in the same boat together, so.
Yes, we are. And if you're part of a different consortium that doesn't have this yet, you're going to have it soon because it's a statewide issue. All the fires in Southern California, all the fires over in the Reading area, it's not just unique to us, unfortunately, so. And then on top of all of this, our estimated cost to clean up after the Kincaid fire, now that we have a $5 million deductible and we're paying all of it ourselves, is about $600,000.
That was to clean the schools and...
To clean all the campuses, yeah.
To clean our four little wonderful schools. We're guessing $600,000. We have a bill for 510,000 that doesn't include everything yet, so.
And it's a huge number, and I was shocked. But then you think of, I have friends in Windsor who had to have their homes cleaned in a similar fashion and they're between $30,000 and $40,000 to clean a single-family home, right? And multiply that out across a district and probably to higher standards, and that's the bill. We are hopeful that the state, I don't know if you cut touch on this, the state will help in that specific cost. Debbie and I will be attending California Office of Emergency Services Meeting tomorrow with application for some fire relief from the state. So we might, we might get some of this money back, we don't know how much and when it will come. And we are actively lobbying our legislators to help us soften the blow to property taxes over time, similar to what they did in the Tubbs fire for districts that are attendanced, that are attendance-funded, so.
I just think that one's going to be a little more interesting because this is not a one-time reduction, it's an ongoing re-benching of our property taxes. I'm not sure the help will be there, but.
Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Not being too pessimistic.
Yeah.
But putting this another way, so the cost of fires to us this year is $675,000 to our general fund this year alone. Then next year, the loss of property taxes plus the higher premium, it's a half a million dollar hit a year ongoing to our budget because our world has changed. Yeah, we, other districts were far worse off than we were, so it's not that we're complaining, but the financial reality is that, yeah, $700,000 this year and half a million more a year going forward out of our budget. That, that does have an impact, so. So in terms of reserves, in light of the now $5 million deductible for wildfires, I'm not saying put $5 million away because that's not realistic. I mean, we need to think about putting 250,000 or 500,000 aside in Fund 17 designated separately just for, you know, emergency funds kind of thing. Not today, something to work towards over time, especially as more one-time monies become available, especially as RDA grows and grows hopefully, maybe there's the chance to put a little more money aside. It's not the top priority for any available funds, but it should be a priority, I think. One of the things that we're looking at, we're going to, we're pushing RESIG on and we'll be looking at ourselves, is there some gap insurance we can go off and buy that would cover that, that first $5 million of our, any loss we suffer? But that'll have a cost, too, right? So again, another reason to put money aside possibly is that could be another 50, $100,000 a year premium. Let's make a business decision at that point, right? So do you spend money on that gap insurance or you put that money into a reserve? That's, that's a great call. I'm sure Debbie will have great advice for you. Okay. So conclusions, remember it is still early in the year. In terms of our budget itself, I think revenues are probably a little low. Like I know they're a little low, but not a lot. I think expenses are conservatively high. I think there's still some things we don't know. We haven't seen an invoice from the North County Consortium for our special ed kids that go there. We don't have final numbers on the fire damage or any relief that we might get from that. I think, I'm confident that what you see in the books, we will finish the year with a higher ending balance than you see today. What you see today is us finishing the year with reserves of 15.66%. And then looking at 2021, 14.56% and not dropping down below that 13.33% until 21, 22 and even then just barely, so. And we know, especially when you get that third year out in the multi-year, those numbers are, aren't that real, so. So I'm, I'm confident that things will improve as the rest of the year goes on and things will be okay barring any more unexpected events, so. So I do recommend a positive certification at first interim. Any questions on the, on the interim? Well, I would just like to say thank you. You guys have been amazing to work with. I feel like you've had a really good comfort with us on the budget. You've had a great understanding of the budget. You've asked great questions and you've also trusted us to take care of the budget for you and with you and that means a lot. I wasn't looking to leave, this opportunity came to me and it was still difficult and it's still bittersweet, but definitely going to miss you guys. Thank you for the amazing ice chest, super excited about that. Yeah, stop smiling, so. I'm definitely going to miss the staff here. It's an amazing leadership team and the folks at the sites are great to work with. I'm going to miss all of you. I am excited, though, that I think maybe after 13-plus years, it's great to have somebody else looking at the budget with a different perspective and I'm super excited for Debbie to get this opportunity. I know she's going to do great things and so I think it's, it's kind of a win-win for everybody, so just, again, just want to say thank you.
Well, Steve, I want to thank you for getting us through those years when we had our, I'm blanking on, on his name, but I really liked him.
Jim Maxwell, yes.
Jim Maxwell. All those years, then we were just battling to turn this district around.
And I'm not sure if some of the other board members know this, but there was one, one interim, we were projecting a $24,000 reserve, not 15%, not 3%, $24,000. That's how tight things got.
It was, it was really, those were very, very tough years and, but I've always felt so comfortable knowing that you're going to be conservative and, and that we were going to come in okay. So thank you for all of your guidance and carefulness. Really appreciate it and I feel like you're leaving us with, in a really good shape, even with the Kincaid fire.
Right.
Even with, yes.
So, thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. All right, this is an action item, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the obligation at first interim.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes. All right, moving on to the next item, item C, the 2021 Budget Development Calendar.
Right, so I didn't actually think to put this up on a slide for you, but, but again, it's one of those things you've seen for, I don't know, 13 years now, so you guys kind of know it. Things are about to get buzzy, busy in the business office in terms of next year's budget. We'll start to get some of the information in January. Like I said, curious to see about the one-time money, curious to see if the COLA holds, even though that doesn't help us necessarily. Could foreshadow some other things. I think, I think the big things for us is any one-time revenue and what happens to STIRS and PERS rates going forward, so. Yeah, so it'll be interesting. From there, it's just working on the LCAP. The new template's out, I think, I don't know, Aaron, if you've previewed it yet or not, but I know there was a webinar a couple days ago that got canceled because it wasn't ready yet and now they've had, about to have the webinar, so it's coming.
Calm down, Aaron.
So yeah, so it's a busy six months getting the, the LCAP updated, learning the new template and getting a budget done at the same time, so it should be fun.
All right, I'd like to make the motion to approve the 2021 Budget Development Calendar.
So moved.
And I'll, okay, Eric, Sally will second? Great, that's great. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. And then we have the Accounting of Developers Fees, item D.
Right, so it was one of our annual requirements, we talk about how, how much developer fees we took in and how much we spent. And again, we have very healthy reserves in that fund. Definitely want to use that money towards the new gym, I think, coming up this spring. We can probably kick in a million dollars or more towards the new gym. Because again, developer fees are for deconstruction or reconstruction of school facilities. So this is a perfect opportunity. The gym is an educational space. There are classrooms in there, there's PE classes in there, so it makes a lot of sense and definitely going to help free up some bond funds to do some other things with as well, so.
So you're talking about the high school gym?
High school gym, yes.
Yes. Because we've got a remodel coming, too.
Right, it's better to do new construction.
Better to do it on new, it's cleaner.
Okay.
All right, looking to approve Adopting Resolution Number 2012. I'll go ahead and move to approved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, this is going to be a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. And then item E, G A S B, is that the GASB? Is that what we call that? All right, thank you.
Very good.
73 Actuarial Study. I hope I've learned something under your tutelage for three years. All right, GASB, let us have it.
Okay, so this is actually new. We have not brought this to you before because we haven't done this before and we probably should have done it last year. It turns out, when the actuaries did our actuarial study last year, they didn't catch the fact that a lot of our retirees get cash rather than getting health insurance through us. So the GASB 73 study is for those folks that get money, not insurance. And they didn't do this last year, they're doing it this year. So it's a new report, it's a new bill we have to pay. It's not too much money, though. So yeah, so it just, it looks at that piece of the puzzle for the folks that get cash.
It really just calls it out, though. We've already had the liability on the books anyway.